Good evening, I'm calling to order this special board meeting on the New Jersey Department of Education's Tax Levy Incentive Aid Program. This meeting has been appropriately advertised. Ms. Coleman, roll call please.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mrs. Devine?
Here.
Mrs. Maya, I got you.
Right on time.
Right on time, I got you. Mrs. McCulkey?
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Mrs. Sherman?
Here.
Mrs. Z?
Here.
And then Mr. Dilkes? Mr. Chu?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, moving on to Section 2, there was no executive session tonight, so we will move on to Section 3, which is Committee of the Whole, where we'll also have a presentation. Can I have a motion to enter Committee of the Whole? And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're now in Committee of the Whole. Dr. McDowell and I will be presenting a presentation on the Tax Levy Incentive Aid Program. We're going to actually use the big screen, knowing that there are a lot of people in the audience, so that's easy to see. And then after that, we'll come back to the Board and have a board discussion about the presentation and program.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here for us to talk about this opportunity to provide financial stability to our schools in Collingswood. And so tonight's agenda, the focus is what the challenges that we're facing and how can the Tax Levy Incentive Aid Program help us navigate? We will summarize the current budget challenges and its impact to our schools. We will provide an overview of the program and why Collingswood qualifies for it. We will describe three potential funding scenarios and their financial impact on the community as well as our schools. And then we'll discuss the continued partnership with the borough. We'll also review timeline and next steps. The Board will have an active discussion talking about the presentation and some of the additional factors. And then we will be responding to community questions and feedback.
And so we'll jump in here to talk about community questions and feedback, knowing that there are probably a lot of questions from the community concerning this program. And that we're going to have public comment section after Committee of the Whole. But the public comment section is not a great question and answer format. And so what we're going to do, we'll take a page out of Haddon Township's book, where during their budget forum, what they had was they had index cards for the audience members and pens. So folks can write down questions, pass them up, and then we'll answer them during Committee of the Whole, so that folks can have all their questions answered. And then we'll enter public comments afterwards. So if you have questions for us, there are index cards at the back along with pens. Please feel free to take one or a few, write down your questions. Ms. Howell Turner and Mr. Longo will help collect those index cards. And you know, we'll collect them up here, and then towards the end of today's agenda, we'll read through all of them and answer all the questions as best as possible. Right?
Thank you, Mr. Chu. So First and foremost, we always want to start with something positive. And so last week, we shared with our community with the public release of the New Jersey School District Performance Reports. We just wanted to highlight the collective work and partnership between our students, our staff, and our families. Three consecutive years of English and math proficiency. And so that's something to be celebrated. So we always want to make sure that we're giving credit where credit is due. In addition to some positive behavior trends that we're also experiencing, and so based on the collective efforts coming from our schools, we're seeing a statistically significant decline in chronic absenteeism across our schools. In addition to 28% fewer days of suspension, which means that young people are spending more time in school and that school culture continues to improve. And so before I dig into numbers and statistics and history, and so I want to provide a disclosure that I am not only speaking this evening in this community forum as a superintendent, as a district executive, as a Collingswood employee, I'm also speaking as a homeowner, a taxpayer, a parent who has two small children in Collingswood Public Schools. And so the duality of what that represents, as well as the commitment that each of the board members who also live here, own homes here, have children who attend school here, is pretty significant. And so in full disclosure, this is not where we want it to be as a community. The challenges that we face as a community, we've been talking about for several years. And it has been our collective expectation that we come together as a community in order to not only confront, but to address this challenge. We fundamentally believe that our students and staff deserve to have schools that are financially stable. And this is an opportunity that many of you in this room have been advocating for for many, many years, both at the local, county, and state level. And this particular program is an opportunity for us to begin to address some of those challenges that have been extremely difficult over the last several years with significant reductions to programs, services, and personnel. So what is our current budget challenge? Year over year, what we are experiencing is a continued increase or a rise in the cost of goods, services, and operational expenses and a significant gap in the amount of resources or new dollars, new revenue, available to address annual operational expenses. Back in '22, '23, our budget gap was $1.8 million. In '24, '25, it was $2.8 million. In this current year, the gap is $3.6 million. And so when we talk about the gap, there's two numbers I want us to focus on. First and foremost, there are calculations within our state formula that talks about what is adequate and what schools and communities are expected to spend in order to provide a thorough and efficient education for their students. And so the difference between what the state has determined, the local contribution for the town is, and what the town actually provides is $8.7 million per year. Over the last three years, we have already reduced $5 million from our operational budget in the form of very painful reductions to personnel, programs, and services. And so the last remaining figure for this year, which was a deficit, was the $3.6 million. What would this have meant if we had not had the opportunity to partner with our borough leaders? What would this mean? Number one, we would have been facing layoffs of 30 to 35 additional personnel across every category of employee. Administration, teachers, secretaries, custodians, nurses, technicians, and so on. We would have experienced a merger of services between our middle and our high school, which would directly contribute to larger middle school and high school class sizes. We would also be forced to close a Collingswood Elementary School. The consolidation of an elementary school into four, the redistribution of students across our town, larger elementary classroom sizes, and the conversion of scheduled preschool classrooms to elementary classrooms in order to fill the gap, which would ultimately result in fewer early childhood education seats. In addition, all athletics and co-curriculars would have been converted to pay-to-play for Collingswood residents. A revised fee structure would have been established. And sports, band, theater, other after-school activities would have been dependent on the number of young people who signed up and paid to participate. This is what we were seeking to avoid with our partnership. In addition to further budget line items, classroom supplies, technology, professional development, additional services. And so we continue to call this the nuclear option. We call it the nuclear option because when a nuclear explosion goes off, there is fallout for many, many years. We have already experienced over the last three years painful but necessary reductions due to the lack of revenues that were available to be able to provide support to our schools. And despite this particular challenge, our staff and our students have worked incredibly hard, and they have continued to make progress. But it's not enough. They need to have dependable, stable, and consistent funding to continue to provide services to young people. And we have a collective responsibility to make sure that we fully fund our schools because our young people depend on it.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. So I'm going to talk about now the NJDOE's Tax Incentive, Tax Levy Incentive Program, which is a program that we, as a district, just learned the details of on March 31st. We've heard that this was coming down the pipe for a while, but we were unsure. When we heard on March 31st, that was a Monday, we immediately got into action to try to see, okay, well, what do we need to do? How will this benefit the district? How will this help us bring financial stability to this district? So quickly, to explain this program, basically what this is, it's a one-time exception to the 2% tax cap law. So all school districts and municipalities within New Jersey are subject to a 2% cap. And what that means is basically, every single year, whatever you're, whatever you taxed, whatever we as district taxed last year, we're limited to increasing our taxes by only 2%. There are also some additional exceptions that we can take, like if our healthcare costs skyrocket, we can increase our taxes by a little bit more. But that limits the amount of taxes we can raise every year. This program lets us have a one-time exception, so for this year and this year only, we can exceed the tax cap. And this gives us the opportunity to raise our local tax levy and permanently reduce those budget deficits. So the blue bar and the yellow bar that you saw earlier, it lets us reduce that gap permanently with a tax increase. Now, in order to incentivize the use of this exception, the New Jersey Department of Education will provide additional funding in the amount of 5% of whatever we raise our taxes by using this program. So if we raise our taxes by, you know, additional a million, they will chip in for one year, 5% of that money as well, as incentive for us to go out and use this program. Now, I want to be clear, not every school district in the state qualifies for this program. In order to qualify for this program, in layman's terms, your district has to be locally underfunded. And it has to have a budget that's below educational adequacy. And those are two concepts that Dr. McDowell mentioned just a second ago. For Collingswood, we are both underfunded locally and below educational adequacy. What does that mean? It means that basically, the state calculates every year for every single school district, how much money, how much tax levy should the local community be contributing to their local schools? That's a local fair share. And so we're underfunded locally because for next year, our local tax levy is $8.7 million below that local fair share. And because of the 2% cap, it's impossible for us to catch up to that amount. Below educational adequacy, so every single year, the New Jersey Department of Education calculates for every single school district, what is the minimum budget that we believe your district needs to provide a thorough and efficient education for all of your students? We are below educational adequacy. And what that means is, not only are we locally underfunded, but our budget is below the amount of money that the state of New Jersey believes we need to spend to provide a thorough and efficient education for all of our students. So because of those two pieces, and also the fact that we are maximizing our own taxation ability, that is why we qualify for this program. So again, not all districts qualify for this program, only districts that are underfunded locally and below their educational adequacy budget. So what is the financial impact of this program and the community? So we're going to present, just to show and to help with our discussion, three potential options for using this Tax Levy Incentive Program. And I'll also go into a little bit more about what the actual next steps are with this. Now, before we do, I want to talk a little bit about, just to, I know it's really, I think, a difficult concept to understand how the state funding formula works. But I want to show this chart here. And what this chart here, what this graph shows is basically all 37 school districts in Camden County. All right? And it shows what percentage of their local fair share they receive from local taxes. In other words, if you're at that red 100% line, you're receiving exactly the amount of money from your local taxes that the state says you should in order to have a thorough and efficient education. So this is for this current school year, school year '24, '25, for all 37 districts in Camden County. Collingswood, we are here in red, we are the sixth lowest in the percentage of fair share that we receive from our community in all of Camden County. So this gap between the 100% and the red bar is, that's for this year, $5.6 million. For next year, it'll be $8.7 million. And so this is the challenge that we've been facing for years now, is that we receive one of the lowest percentages of our local fair share, of what we should be receiving for our local community out of Camden County. The only other districts that are below us are Brook Lawn, Camden County Vocational, which is not really the same type of thing, Gloucester City, Cheslhurst, and Camden. And also, just so we know, the average for '24, '25 is 100%. So if you were average this, it's 100% is the average. And so this is one of those things where this, for me at least, is really important to understand. When I say we're locally underfunded, this is what I mean. We are sixth lowest in Camden County in the actual percentage of local fair share that we're supposed to receive. Okay, so let's talk through three different options that this could help fund, this program could help fund. First is the full funding increase. So this would be the maximum amount of additional tax revenue that we could bring in according to this program. All right? And so what this is, is basically, the state has calculated that we are below adequacy by about $6.4 million. All right? So I understand that our local fair share gap, we're getting $8.7 million less than what we should in tax levy. The reason why we're only about $6.4 million is because the state has been chipping in additional state aid that they shouldn't be into our budget for years now. But basically what this is, is basically, this is the maximum amount we can go for in this program. It'd be $6.1 million of additional tax increase. And that would equate to about $111 additional taxes on the average household per month. Now, the state, oopsies. The state, right here, that's the 5%. So they will chip that in for one year. So that's additional state aid they would chip in for one year if we went out for this much. Now, the expected impact of this, now let's just hope that there are not any absurd increases in inflation because of all that's going on, you know, at the federal level and in the country, all that stuff, right? The expected impact of being able to bring in this additional amount of money is that, one, it lets us avoid the devastating cuts, the cut, you know, the riffing of 30 to 35 staff members, the closure of an elementary school, the having to turn all of our extracurricular activities into complete pay-to-play situations, right? It avoids that situation for this year. It will allow the district to bring back some of the previously cut staffing programming. So if you remember, last year, a year ago, this district, we had to cut 21 positions, three administrators, 18 teachers. That meeting was probably one of the worst meetings that a lot of the board members that had been on the Board for multiple years was in because we heard over and over again from community members about the excellent, amazing work of the teachers who were being laid off did. And so this right here would give us the opportunity to bring back some of those staff. Then also, knowing that our high school and middle school wellness center is federally funded, and that grant ends in 2026, this full-level funding would also allow us to bring in and support our middle school, high school wellness center within our own budget. And finally, I think this is one of the most important pieces, which is, with this level of tax increase, it could also help provide stability, like budgetary stability, for the students and staff, for the district, for the town, for several years. And this is one of those things where we see year after year, increases, increasing costs. We've had cuts after cuts after cuts. And this is why this increase could help us provide stability by basically getting us closer to the amount of local fair share that we should be raising, the amount of local taxes we should be raising, so that we can actually support the staff, the services, the programming that we should be supporting as a school district. So this is the full, this is the maximum amount that we could go out for with this program. Example, the mid-level funding increase would be $5.4 million. And this would be an average of $97.92 monthly cost on an average household. And you know, if we went out for $4.4 million, then the state would chip in additional $270,000, just for a year, but that's their incentive. This type of funding, just to understand where we're coming from here, is that with this level of funding, we wouldn't have the space to maintain the middle school and high school wellness center within the budget after it leaves, after the federal grant expires. This would provide some budgetary stability, but again, understanding that the rising costs, it would provide some budgetary stability, not as much as if we went out for the full amount. And then finally, I want to present the, we'll say, the minimum funding increase. So right here, we're saying $3.8 million, a additional tax increase. Additional average monthly cost for the average household, about $69.42. And the additional state aid here would be around $191,000 they chip in. This would be what we would need to maintain our services for next year. It would not buffer us at all in the following years for any increases in inflation and costs, in salaries, any of that stuff. It would not buffer us for the following year. But it would get us through this next school year without any cuts. And so this would be what the minimum funding increase amount would be. So I also want to speak a little bit about the borough partnership. And so one of the things that we've been talking about over the last month or so has been a partnership with the borough. And this Tax Levy Incentive Program is actually part of that partnership. And so we're very grateful that the borough was able to find a way to help us temporarily, for one year, plug this budget gap, right, to prevent cuts for next year. As part of that joint agreement, item number three in it, we agreed that if the state came out with such a program, we would go out and use this program to minimize the amount of funding that the borough would have to chip in. One of the main concerns was that, from the borough, was that they did not want to be part of having to, you know, fund the district and wanted us to be able to fund us through our own mechanisms. And so this is part of the agreement, making sure that if such a program came out, we would utilize it so that it would reduce and potentially even eliminate the borough's need to chip in for a one-time temporary hold. One of the differences, big differences here, and one of the good things about this program is that it provides a much longer-term solution. So instead of just having, being able to plug our hole for one year and one year only, this Tax Levy Incentive Aid Program lets us raise our taxes permanently so that we can have much more stability year to year to year, rather than just plugging the hole for one year and then having to figure it out afterwards. The other thing too, is the partnership is continuing. We're currently, the district is currently in the process of reviewing the redevelopment agreement for the middle school and high school athletic fields that the borough sent over. And so that's one of those things where we're excited to continue working with the borough, especially on these items that can help all our students and the district itself. Finally, let's talk about timeline and next steps. So today's this meeting to introduce this program, to talk, give those options. We're going to have another board meeting on Thursday, so in two days. And that will be to vote, to pass a resolution, to apply for this NJDOE Tax Levy Incentive Aid Program. So there will be no vote tonight, to introduce the program, to discuss it amongst the Board, to answer community questions, and to also hear community feedback. On Thursday, we'll actually pass a resolution to apply for this. Monday is when the application is due. They gave us two weeks, basically, to apply for this program. And something that I want to make sure everyone understands is that, how this process works is that, in order to apply for this program, every single bit of the tax increase has to be justified by line items, by our business administrator, justified for why that tax increase would go towards and would be helpful for the thorough and efficient education of our students. So every single bit of that tax increase has to be justified. Once it's sent into Trenton, for the New Jersey Department of Education, they will then spend the next, hopefully, week, maybe week and a half, two weeks, going through all those submissions, checking the work, checking the justifications. And then they will get back to us about how much, what the maximum tax increase they will approve for our district will be. So the maximum, as I said a minute ago, was $6.1 million. So when we get heard back from them, they'll tell us, is it that they're actually going to approve the $6.1 million? Or is it going to be a little bit less? We don't know yet, and that's part of the application process. So again, all of that has to be justified. We have to wait to hear back from the NJDOE. We have, which we anticipate to hear by the end of April, because then there's a lot more work for our business administrator and superintendent to do, to add that back into the budget. We have our regular board meeting on April 28th. And then we'll have on Monday, May 5th, our official public hearing for our 2025, 2026 budget. And that's also when we plan to then also officially pass our budget. And that would be when the final tax increase would be voted on as part of passing the budget. So just to clarify, on Thursday, we are not actually passing a tax increase. We are applying to the state to see how much we can actually increase our taxes by. When they come back, then at that point, we'll know how much we can, and then we'll have the discussion to understand how much we will. And then on May 5th, the plan is then, when we pass the budget, that is when we would pass what the actual tax increase ends up being. So that's the timeline, that's the next steps. At this point, we're going to move to board member discussion. So we'll come back to the table, and then from there, we'll also answer all those note cards. I think I'm seeing a lot of them being passed around, so that's awesome. Again, if you have questions, please feel free to grab a note card in the back, write them down. And Ms. Howell Turner and Mr. Longo will collect them. And Dr. McDowell, do you want the? Okay, so for board members, I know that this will be our first chance to discuss this as a board. Questions, comments, thoughts from board members?
I'll start. That was a lot of information. I really would have liked to have seen that presentation before just now. But I guess, I just want to clarify that whatever we end up asking for the application on Thursday, that does not, we have to wait that does not, we have to wait for the state, and the state is going to come back to us, you think, within about a week and a half from that point? Is that the projected timeframe?
I'll I'll let Beth answer without timeline. I don't want to, so really quickly.
It's Trenton, so they're not very timely. They didn't give us a lot of time to do all of this. But we did everything as fast as we could for two districts to get everybody the information that they needed. But we do have to certify taxes by the middle of May, so Trenton is aware of that statutory deadline. So my hope is probably a week to two, probably when we're on spring break, I'm probably going to get an alert and I'm probably going to have to come in. I, that's exactly what's going to happen. But that's going to give us, well, yeah, you know, it happens. But then it, we're going to have to revise the budget. So we'll have our, still have our April meeting as regular, and then we'll have to meet like in committees to redo the budget again.
And I also want to do do want to clarify that the information in the presentation, the the cuts were discussed with the entire board on March seventh. The information about the new, about the tax incentive levy program was shared with the board last last week.
I do appreciate the honesty of all the, all the cuts that were coming. I think that the community needs to be aware of what could have happened. I appreciate that a lot. All right, I guess that's it for now.
Yeah, I think the the issues are things that we've been talking about for years now, particularly around the funding. And we have been aggressively going after funding opportunities for the last five years. This is something that we have been advocating to the state, saying that we need a solution, that the two percent cap is causing these issues that were, I mean, have provided property tax relief for when the program was started. But now districts like ours have to come up with the fact that one keeps going up and the other one just can't catch up. So the state's answer was, instead of fixing this statewide, to put this down on our shoulders, to have to make this tough decision. This is an opportunity that I think we sit at where we can close this gap and put our district in better footing to afford the things that we say that we want and that we value. We need to avoid being in this place every year. I've sat here for five years, and every single year, it has been this conversation about how are we going to avoid cuts? And this is an opportunity to get our district out of that conversation. And I think that's something that we need to be aggressive in.
So it would have been nice to see the whole presentation before tonight, so I'll start with that. But I also want to acknowledge that six lowest in Camden County for local funding we receive. But at the same time, school performance was up three years in a row, decrease in absentee and twenty-eight fewer days of suspension. So our teachers are still showing up, doing what we ask them to do for part of this, for what we pay them for. My biggest issue is what does this mean for contracts? I know we can't have an open discussion about negotiations, but this has to mean, if we're going to tax people an increase of like this, it has to mean that, you know, the contract stays, you know, is is final soon. I mean, I can't imagine us taxing taxpayers this much money additional and and not finishing what we started here. I also just really want to acknowledge that anywhere from seventy dollars to a hundred and almost twelve dollars a month for some folks is really not a lot of money. But for others, it's a lot of money. And I just want to take that into consideration when we're reviewing the plan. We don't want to lose teachers, we don't want to cut programs, but we have to think about our community and, you know, their pocketbooks at the end of the day.
In terms of of, I I think what you're talking about, you're striking at one of the, I think, core challenges here, right, which is, which is that basically we want to be able to provide as robust of raises to teachers as we can. And we also do not want to have to lay off teachers year after year. One of the challenges that we've had is that, is that the, you know, we've we've offered above county average raises. And one of the problems is that, frankly speaking, this, the the district can't even afford that, right? Someone mentioned to me the other day, they said, well, we seem to have afforded it for this year. And we had to remind them, we had to lay off twenty-one positions last year in order to afford it. And so what, this is why this program, I think, is so exciting is because we cannot keep on going through a cycle of of laying off staff over and over and over again. And we also recognize, as a board, I'm sure all of us agree, that we need to be providing raises for our staff. And so that's why I think this tax levy incentive program is really important for us. Because we we can't, as a community, say, our teachers deserve more, and also say, but do not make us pay for it. Because this is public education, this is a public service. The public, the community pays for this. And so if we want to provide more for our students, for our teachers, we have to pay for it.
I wanted to thank you for drawing attention to the good news at the, at the beginning of the meeting, because it is really, really good news. And I think seeing years of of growth and progress in our district is, A, something that shouldn't fall through the cracks, right? B, is absolutely the result of the hard work of the people who work in this district. And of course, our families and our our students as well. And I think it's with that progress in mind, right, that we, we don't want to continue to say, let's do more with less, right? We want to really make sure that we're doing every single thing we can, turning over every rock we can to keep that progress going without overburdening, right? And continuing to to have to do more with less, right? So we're doing it, and and that is really impressive on the part of our schools. But to me, this is a way to say, let's get a little more so that we don't have to necessarily do so much with less.
Can you guys be specific? I think in the maximum that you put in there of the six point one million dollars, you mentioned that if we get that and that passes, that you would be bringing some programming back that was removed, I think, like in the last couple of years. So you can be more specific about, for the public, what programming that you plan on bringing back if you were to get that money?
So first, first and foremost, there has been a question regarding the financial long-term sustainability of the Wellness Center. And so back in two thousand twenty-two, we were very fortunate to secure a federal grant, which brought in roughly nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year for four years. And so the original grant program provided for opportunities for renewal if schools or if grantees fulfill the goals and objectives of the original grant. Needless to say, the conditions from the federal government, the Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services have dramatically changed, and there is no, there is no longer an opportunity for renewal. And so what we have found after meeting with our leaders, both at the middle school and the high school, as well as those in the counseling department and the Wellness Center, is that critical mental health services and and counseling support to anywhere from between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty students every single month is currently taking place. And so in order to be able to sustain a large degree of those really time-sensitive, emergent, critical services to students, that would be included in that. In addition, we followed up with all of our elementary administrators, our secondary administrators and all of our supervisors. And we asked for them to provide targeted areas of prioritization, should additional funding be made available. And so things like curriculum, things like specific programs, things like training, professional development, additional teacher opportunities. We have a running list, but we can't speak with specificity until we know how many dollars would be would be made available. And so we have all of that waiting and in the queue. Our school leaders were very mindful and meticulous to understand this is not a a credit card, it's not a shopping list. It is how do we restore some of what has been lost? And what is most critical to be able to support students and staff?
And I know that one of the discussions that that I think has been had is around potential NTSS positions, potentially. And so that, again, this is one of those things where it depends on the the amount of funding that is approved and and that we end up as a board vote voting for, because in the end, this this is a board vote. I do also want to be very clear that in terms of of the money, part of the the goal here is to bring long-term stability to the district. And so one of the things that that I think us as a board, we should be mindful of is we we don't want to, say, bring in five million dollars and then try to bring in as many staff as possible with that. Because what the, because we have to be careful of what inflation will do in the following years. And so we don't want to be bringing in staff just to have to lay them off the following year. And so there's a really clear balance there that depends on on how much is approved and then how do we balance the 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 needs of of our our students in that amount for long-term stability?
I have one more question. You mentioned that the Borough submitted some sort of redevelopment plan to the board. Can you tell us a little bit more about that redevelopment plan and what's that, what's included in that? Like, would it be rebuilding the stadium, you know, all the things that we have talked about in the referendum?
Yeah, so that that is part of the joint agreement. So basically, it was the redevelopment plan for, well, the, not the plan, but the redevelopment agreement for Knight Park and the middle school, high school fields. And so it's it's just the, this agreement between the Borough and the the district for doing that project, you know, jointly using the money that the the Borough will bond out for. So that's currently with the the board attorney reviewing it, making some of that. There's probably going to be, you know, a few rounds of back and forth to to make sure it's good. And then at that point, it would have to be voted on by the by the board.
So to clarify, if it's a joint agreement, what would the, so you said that funds will be provided by the Borough. What kind of monetary contributions would the district be making?
For the, for the, yeah, for re, so so that is the, that is the bond that the that the Borough is taking out. So the part of the joint agreement was that the Borough wanted to take out fifteen million dollars to both do the redevelopment of the fields in Knight Park, and then also the idea would be to use some of that money to help temporarily fill our gap for the coming school year.
So I just want to be clear that I don't think we have articulated, this is what that money would be used for. I don't think anybody's received that. It's the agreement that we will continue to partner around that bond that would be asked of. Look, I want to be really clear about what we're asking. Is there some like list of, short list of items? Or is it we're agreeing to proceed in this direction, knowing that the Borough is getting funds to support and reinvest in recreational facilities, both for the school to use and our community? I just want to clarify that it's that agreement, nothing has been further discussed.
Oh, yeah, no. Yeah, 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 that's the the joint agreement that was discussed March tenth. Yeah, this, so that was just the the kind of next steps of that joint agreement that was discussed on March tenth. Yes, yep.
Um, I just want to make sure that I'm I'm understanding some of the numbers here. So firstly, when we're talking about our three, our current three point six million dollar deficit, and that was according to the presentation, to maintain staffing and programs as is, correct? So that would mean if the state decided, and that's when we get, you said, like, the state's aware of mid-May being the deadline, so we should have that in a few weeks. So if the state decided to allow for a mid, the mid-level or the maximum, then then we would be looking at additional, you know, pro, programs coming back, staff positions coming back, things like that.
So I think it depends on how much they're, they approve and then how much we approve a as a board, right? So so they will approve, basically, they'll say, this is the maximum you can go for. And then as a board, part of the May fifth vote, part of us approving the final budget is, it would be how much we're actually going to take on.
Just considering all that the public and being here, this is a public meeting and all the staff that's here. Is there a backup plan in case the state does not give us the answer that we need in a timely manner? Because they have to have their notices, I would imagine. Meg said something about mid-May, I'm guessing that that's the timeframe. So is there a backup plan just in case so that we don't have to go through the process of, you know, letting people know they're not going to be renewed and then suddenly they are, you know?
Yeah, so this is, so so I think there are two pieces to this, right? One is is on the state level, what their kind of operation of their plan is, right? And so the state knows that there's statutory requirements to get a, we have to, we have to pass our budget by May fourteenth. We have to have our public hearing by May seventh, right? So so that's what we're doing is is May fifth. And so they know that that's that's a statutory, in-the-law-books requirement, so so they know that, and and they're working. I think unfortunately, that's why the timeline is so tight. The second part of that question is, again, this is part of of the joint agreement, right? We agreed, the the Borough found some temporary funding for us for one year. And we also agreed that should this program come in, we would go out for this program to lower that that, the amount of money the Borough would have to chip in. My my understanding was that there was a second reading yesterday by the commissioners to approve the fifteen million dollar bond. And so that that option should, should, I think, the the NJ DOE program, for some reason, not get done correctly, that option hopefully would still be there.
Okay, so just so everybody is clear and so I'm clear, that partnership is still very much in place and active. We have not said to them that we're not doing this at all, we're not partnering with them for any of the other things aside from that, aside from the athletic field. So that partnership, just so everybody is aware, is still on the table and still very much a thing. We're just hoping to sort of balance that out with this new plan, essentially, right?
So this is part, this is part of the partnership, right? This is, so, yeah, 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 yeah. So on the, on the partnership, yep.
I guess maybe I'll just ask it a slightly different way. We can't count our eggs until they hatch, and at this point, we don't know what we don't know. We are asking and hoping for more so we can meet all of the needs of our teachers who have clearly done the work and the results. And it could be less than what we asked the Borough for. It could be not enough to fill the gap. So we have to, like, sit in the space of, we said, can you help us? And this is our long-term supply, sustainability plan. And we may be in a position where both are necessary, and we're going to have to have a longer-term discussion around, okay, if it's too low, what is our longer-term plan to fill these gaps that are going to get bigger and bigger? So like, that's the reality, is there is nothing that is super certain yet. But we committed to making this first step towards a more long-term solution, is what I'm gathering. But our minimum required is three point six, right? Am I just?
To maintain.
I was just going to say just a couple of things kind of broadly. I teach in a district that is facing a thirteen million dollar shortfall, and it's adequacy budget right now. And they are gearing up to do the exact same plan tomorrow. Can you talk briefly about some of the other districts surrounding us in Camden County that are also facing this? I mean, I've met with several of them during the fair funding collective meetings, but do you know our other Camden County districts doing the same?
And I saw, of course, I think Oakland is is going out, they're having their board meeting.
Yeah, tomorrow night is their meeting to vote, is tomorrow.
And then we know Haddon Township is as well, Audubon, I, Dr. Maud, I think you had a number of other ones.
Yeah, so so far, we put out a call to all of the districts in Camden. So not all of the districts, there are three hundred school districts across the state of New Jersey that qualify for this program. And so I I I think that that illustrates the magnitude of the challenges associated with the funding formula, where three hundred school districts out of roughly six hundred are underfunded at the local level and are below adequacy. And so in Camden County, we reached out with our partners. And right now, we we know that Audubon, Haddon Township, Oakland, us are currently actively going through this same process this week. Not everyone, we've, I've only heard back from about half of the districts so far in Camden County, but those are the ones that have already confirmed.
And I know one of the things to also keep in mind is that in order for us to actually apply for this program, not, there's actually, I think, three criteria. It's not only that we're below, underfunded locally and that we're, our budget is below educationally adequate. It's also that we've maxed out our own legal ability to raise taxes. And so there, I I know there are a few other districts in the area that have banked cap, so they haven't maxed out their taxes in in the last several years. And so they can actually go out and raise a lot of taxes already on their own. They would have to max that out first before they can go out to do that. I know, I think Haddon Township has has maxed out, they had bank cap, they maxed out their tax, and they will now go out for even more right now because of of the funding gaps.
And I think this speaks to kind of the larger systemic issue. You said, you know, three hundred out of about six hundred districts, that's half the districts in New Jersey. You know, this is a state that has, you know, we're, the state is like seventy-three hundred square miles and it has six hundred districts. and it has six hundred districts. Just for comparison, I'm from Virginia, it has a hundred and thirty-two districts and it's forty-two thousand square miles. So this is a larger systemic issue. And the word that kept coming up over and over again in our last fair funding collective meeting was unsustainable. This is a great first step, kind of talking, you know, to what Mr. Craig was saying. But I think this also screams of like, down the road, there's going to have to be some larger conversations about how our districts look. Because even with this, while this is, I think, a wonderful opportunity to kind of get us out of this hole, this is going to be something we're going to have to consider. We are a small tax base right now. And seventy to a hundred dollars is a lot of money for a lot of people, including me. I'm a public school teacher, my husband is a public school teacher who is also working without a contract. Seventy to a hundred dollars for us is grocery money, it is rec money for our kids. It is going to hit us on top of our reassessment and on top of all of our other costs. So I am very aware of the burden that this is going to place on teachers in this district. But I do believe there is something to be said about investing in this school. We hear constantly from members of the community about prioritizing and how our budget needs to speak to our priorities. I think this needs to speak to our town's priorities. Because an investment in our schools is, at the end of the day, an investment in our town and its future, period. And so, I just think this is, kind of going back to Mr. Craig said, an opportunity like this is not going to come along very often. Especially at a time where we are getting threats from federal funding, Title I funding, from grant money. Who knows what's going to happen with that? I don't know if we have the opportunity or if the time to, you know, nickel and dime everything at a point when we are looking at some real serious financial problems in the future. And as a public educator, I am very willing to make personal financial sacrifices if it means that our schools are going to stay open.
Um, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
We had discussed this part of the, as a next step within the other plan, having to go out for a budget referendum in the fall. This would eliminate the need to go out for that. While also, instead of having to put the cost into going out for another referendum, we would be getting that five percent money from the state. I think the other, I'm sorry, yeah, I can't. That, it's, it's that thing I'm fighting? I move it closer, yeah, I'll lean in, sure. The, the reality being that if we went out for a budget referendum in the fall and it did not pass, we would have to go out for another budget referendum in December. And if that did not pass, we would have to go out for another budget referendum at the next available time. Because the option of laying off all those staff and closing a school isn't good this year and it isn't good next year or any of the years forward. So we would continue to fine-tune the ask and spend the money that we need to and aggressively get the funding to try to get us back to where we need to be. But this is an option that allows us to eliminate all of that uncertainty for our staff, for our community, and to put us on the right foot.
I, I, sorry. I would like to comment around, like, I can appreciate that we also need to recognize in our agreement, we kind of put in writing that we will show up for the community, particularly for those where this is going to push them beyond. And I do not shirk that responsibility in this conversation, right? This board will have to mobilize and get out there and help people to stabilize what this can mean to them. And I think we all have to recognize that that is just the reality of the work we have to do. It is not done with this conversation or the next. But we do need to make sure we're supporting those who have, this is going to be a tipping point. We need to find a way to make this possible and show up in that regard as well. And I think we all need to just figure out how we show up for our community. Because we are really asking them to lean in and show up fully and in a way that I think is completely necessary. But we will also have to do some of, like, those detailed things. We said we'd set up that, right, those, supporting our senior citizens and those on fixed income so that their taxes are, remain the same. Like, that's the work after we, and once we get to a point of understanding what this impact will be.
I think that was one of the pieces of the partnership with the borough that felt very promising to me, right? Was that, you know, we don't have access to the broadest of, you know, of the community because we have access to the people who are a part of our school district, right? So partnering with, with sort of the other large decision-making body in our town would mean that we can do some of those supportive things in ways we can't alone, right? So I do think that there's opportunity there to do exactly what you're saying, Zakiya, in partnership, right, with, with, with the borough.
And also, I didn't, I think, Zakiya and Sarah, what you have said basically is that, and I agree with you, which is that this is not the end of the story. This is not happily ever after, right? But the work has to keep on going because this will provide us, you know, hopefully with stability for several years. But we have to make sure because we're facing a structural deficit, right? Where the two percent cap is still there. And we have to make sure that we're still continuing to be as efficient as possible, advocating at the state, county, local level for, for additional ways to properly fund or save costs. And to do all the work that comes after, right, this. Because this is just not the end of the story here.
I was wondering if we could be specific about what we mean by, by, you know, being there for the community and the people who are going to be most affected. Because, I mean, obviously, I would like to be too, but what power would we have to do that? You know, like, do we have, do we have the ability to determine who gets saddled with most of that tax levy and who does not? Like, I just wondered if we could specify what we mean by, by being there for those hardest hit.
Yeah, so I believe what Zakiya was talking about was, was the proposal from the borough to have students help to go around and talk to all senior citizens within the town to make sure that they're all signed up for all of the tax incentive programs for senior citizens, like the senior tax freeze and so forth. You know, I think that that sort of communication outreach is helpful. And of course, that would have to be in collaboration with the borough because I think the borough has a bigger reach there. But again, you know, I think, I think your point is correct. We, we don't, as a school district, have any authority to say, this person should get taxed this much and that person should get taxed that much, right? We are within the law when it comes to how the taxes are dispersed amongst our community.
If the state were to approve us for the maximum, which obviously, it would be a dream come true, as Matt said, considering what we've all been through the last couple of years. Would an option, and I'm just throwing it out there, would an option be for us to say, you know, that might be a little too much for our community, maybe, you know, thank you for the max, but we decide to do mid-range? So we, you know, is that an option?
Yeah, so very specifically, the, from the communications I've seen, that what the state has said is basically, you apply, you get approved for an amount. And, but that does not lock you into having to do that amount. That just lets you know what you can do. And then, the board must vote to decide how much, if any of it, we do.
So a couple of comments. One, I do think that, I know, I know you've touched on this many times before, but the cost, what it would cost for the community if we were to take out the arts programs and the music programs and all the things, and what that would cost if we were going to have people pay to play, essentially, would be possibly significantly more than this. So I do want people to sort of think that out. But I do also want to make sure that everybody understands that we recognize that by not doing a referendum and by doing it this way, we are taking away your right to vote. And we get that. And, you know, I just want to touch on that because that's not anything that any of us want to do. If that's our, that's not, that would not be our choice if we didn't have to do that. This is, I definitely see that this is a one-time opportunity. And I'm, we're trying to weigh the, trying to weigh the cost versus the risk and all the things. I do want to make sure that as a board, we're taking responsibility for anything that we do do. Because I know that we don't want to find ourselves in a position next year or the year after where we're saying, we didn't do anything to cause this, this isn't our problem, this is the state problem or this is whatever, whoever's problem. We need to be mindful of how we're all spending the money and making sure that we're doing the best thing that we can for the kids in the community and the staff. And the third and final piece, I think it's really important for the community to understand, I'm just going to touch on this because I agree with Maggie, that it's important for them to see that we are respecting our staff and that the contract is settled if we're going to be having such a big ask to the community.
So can I just speak to the frame of the right to vote? Because we're all here because people use their voices and said, we trust you to show up for our community. And we're having this conversation so you can hear what we're trying to balance and think through. And frankly, we're going to have to keep going back and asking or we will fundamentally not look like what we do today, right? So that's just true, right? Like, we can't afford what we want to do and need to do. Like, we can't afford it. So that's the rock and harder place we are in. Today, we can't afford, and as I think everybody's heard us all say, if we could afford it, we would be doing it, right? I don't, the lights on is what we are trying to focus on. I also think we don't want to cut off our nose despite our face, right? So we don't want to be here next year saying, oh, well, we didn't really do enough. So now, we still have to go to a referendum and hope it works. So I do, right, everyone's questions, this conversation, we're not voting today with intention. I think we've heard and learned, we need to hear people and adjust. We also don't know the answer. The answer could be you're getting two million and then we're having a completely different conversation. The answer could be six million and then we have an even better conversation in terms of the rock and hard place for other things, right? We don't know. But what we do know is everyone here needs to make sure they are fully representing our community as taxpayers, as parents, as just people, and show up for this thing that is public education, that is publicly funded. Right, like, that's what we are doing. And I think we're all really earnestly trying to show up wholly and fully. And I want to really make sure we allow time for everyone's questions so we can internalize them. Because the last thing I would say is this presentation frankly digested a lot of communication that I was looking up. Right, those are scenarios. Like, it's just giving us an example of what the math would look like without us having to make it up. So it's just helping us digest font ten updates, right? Like, that we need to understand. But we really need to hear what everybody's prioritizing. I've heard people prioritize teachers and the contract, one hundred percent. I've heard everyone prioritize bringing programs back. I've heard everyone prioritize making sure that we aren't here and disint, alienating members of our community. So we all need to figure out how to show up in support of all of those things. And so, we are it, right? Like, that's, that's just true. And so, push us, ask us, and make sure we show up in that way is what I would say is our responsibility.
I think the other thing to remember, I guess, is we'll, whatever we get approved for, how we will see it will be through the budget and where we apply it. So we will be able to see as a board where this money is directly going as it is infused into the budget. And I think, as you pointed out, but also just important to remember, we've talked about budget process and how it starts in early October. So we have a list already of things that we've already had to tell school leaders that we can't afford. So finding ways, at least within the first year, and it should be easy, but then changes the conversation in years moving forward as to like what we can look forward to or prioritize in what we do and see in the budget.
And just absolutely, and Matt, to your point, so I just want to make sure I understand the timeline. So on May 5th, not only would we be, I just want to make sure I understand, not only would we be voting to, whether to raise the tax levy to the point that the state had approved, but we would also be knowing where that additional revenue would be going? Like, would the budget be finished and us be able to have a chance to look at it?
Yeah, so the vote to approve the taxes is the vote to, my understanding is it's actually not a separate vote. It's the vote to approve the budget, right? And so, because the taxes are part of that, de facto, it's the vote to approve the taxes, yeah. So I think I want to get to the audience questions. Ms. Howell Turner, if you're able to bring those index cards up? All right, so I'm going to read through all the in-house questions. Ms. Howell Turner was able to group them, maybe by logical groupings, but I'll read through them all. I know there most likely will be some repeats, but I don't think it hurts to answer the same question multiple times. So the first question, full funding increase question. This doesn't set us up for future budgets. We have to be planning for continued rise in operational costs. Oh, so I guess that's a comment about the full funding increase. And then, the next comment is mid-level increase. What does some stability actually mean? Ah, so here's the question, right? So what does some stability actually mean for the mid-level increase? What that means is that, is that there would be some buffer, right? Let's say five-point-four-million-dollar option, right? Our current budget gap is three-point-six million. There would be some buffer to help next year when there's increased costs because of inflation, just like that. There would be a little bit of buffer there. And so, that's what some stability actually means. The difficulty about this is trying to, I think, Ms. Coleman says earlier, you're trying to nail gel to a wall. Part of the problem is we don't know exactly what inflation will look like. Like, this year, in our budget process, we heard about a twenty percent increase to our utilities that I don't think anyone had on their radar until we heard about it, right? And so, that's what some stability means, is that there is some buffer there. It's not like we're just taking out the money we need to get by this year. But it's not as much as if we were to take out as much as we possibly could here. Did the tax levy pass legislation? And then, what is the plan if we don't receive it? So I believe that this question is basically, oh. Yeah, so then, the next question is, so these are related. Next question is, how confident is the BOE that these additional costs will be approved? So these two are the same. So basically, did this pass legislation and how confident will we be that this cost will be approved? So my understanding, this is part, this tax levy program is part of the governor's budget proposal that's working its way through the state right now. The, my understanding is that the DOE is confident enough to tell districts about the program and to have us go down the process.
Yeah, my understanding, once the governor's budget is approved, it's, what's written in there is acts of law. So it's, I think he did set aside, what, I got the number wrong, maybe twenty, twenty-two million of all these like little pockets of the five percent for all the districts. So it is in his budget.
What? I'm being, I'm being encouraged.
With that one too, I mean, the state budget won't be done until the middle of the summer and they're going to have to give us an answer before that, so it has to be.
Well, June 30.
June 30, yeah, middle, June 30, so.
But, yeah.
So is our answer, we don't know?
Well, no, he set aside money in his budget for this program. And my understanding from the county office today is they're moving forward. They're getting ready to accept the applications. And Trenton, I don't know who in Trenton's reviewing, I did ask today, who was reviewing these on behalf of the districts? I asked that of the county office and they said staff in Trenton. So it won't be the county offices, I guess it's Office of Finance in Trenton, I'm assuming.
Given that we have a lot of questions here, I've been encouraged to read through all of the questions in a thematic group to then be able to answer them together. So next one is, what is the average household you used? As your example, many households are already seeing a hundred fifty-two-hundred dollars a month increase. How much do we spend for each student? Do those other towns have higher school taxes than Kyneswood? Are the other towns paying higher rates of taxes? Where can we get the data so we can compare? How much closer does this, I think initiative get us closer to the other boroughs? Is it enough as a long-term solution? Eight-point-seven million state equals to cause responsible. State will contribute five percent of increase. I'm not sure that that's a question. Why do repeatedly offer that staff is at risk of layoffs? While true for this district, it appears as a veiled threat and bargaining tactic to get what you've determined to be best. Why does the BOE do layoffs and continue to maintain five elementary schools? If this is for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six, seniors who did not already participate in the senior freeze will not be able to avoid tax increases. So I think there's a few pieces here about the tax increases. First one was the average household used. I believe that's the. First one was the average household used, I believe that's the the, uh, four hundred and, I think, forty-five thousand dollar average, uh, tax assessment, uh, in in town. S- something like that, yeah, it's it's the average, uh, assessed value of the of the home in Clingswood. Um, how much closer does this, uh, uh, initiative get us to the other boroughs? So remember, our local fair share, we're eight point, next year will be eight point seven million dollars below our local fair share in local tax levy without this program. So that means that we'll be paying seventy percent of what the state has calculated we should be paying as a community for our schools. This would get, if they pass the maximum amount, this would get us six point one million. So eight point seven minus six point one, we're looking at at two point six million, still below that that local fair share. Uh, and so it gets us much closer, much closer than we've been, right? But the for for a long time, but it it doesn't quite get us at that hundred percent. Um, yeah. And then I think there's also the question about about, uh, uh, layoffs. And and the 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 thing is, I I just want to be clear, the the layoff discussion, we're trying to be very clear with the community about, um, the consequences of of the budget hole. And and let let me be clear, we had to lay off twenty-one teachers last last year. And the year before, we had to, we couldn't renew, we couldn't fill eleven positions, um, of folks that that left because of these budget holes. Um, this is one has been not meant to be a threat, but to understand, to tell the community, we have to pay for our education so that we can maintain the teachers that we need. If if you search through, um, uh, I'll kind of call you out here, uh, Mr. Craig out here, he he periodically sends me links because there are so many news articles right now about school districts throughout New Jersey that have budget deficits that have to cut staff. And it's one of those things where right now we have an opportunity to help bring stability, so we don't have to do that.
Yeah, I'll I'll just share, I mean, we've done trainings, uh, Ms. Maya and I have been on trainings talking about the the funding gap that the the nation was facing post-Escher Escher and the fiscal cliff that was coming up. And my algorithm right now is school, school budgets that are just facing absolutely devastating cuts. And, um, if you look at what's happening in Middletown, if you look at what's happening in Flemington or, um, Yvcham, yeah. It's, there there honestly are too many to name right now, but it is really, really devastating out there, what the realities that folks are having to deal with. And the somewhat creative, but unfortunately, a lot that sound the same as what we're looking at now with its staff layoffs, its closing buildings, its getting rid of extracurriculars. It's it's going so bare bones that it doesn't look like the school that you would expect, that you would want to send your kids.
Um, the next set of questions have to do with, uh, the, uh, use of this program instead of the referendum, so I'll I'll read through them. And I've grouped them as well here. So, uh, the first one is, the borough plan involved a referendum which would give residents a voice in this decision. Why would you pursue a funding option that eliminates the opportunity, uh, for local people to choose? Uh, then, on an annual basis, the BOE was able to, uh, present a budget above the two percent cap with a community vote. Why did we, uh, not use democracy to fund this outcome rather than this huge increase, uh, at, uh, once while losing teachers and educating programs in the interim? Um, why didn't the BOE work with the borough and residents to create a plan for residents to vote on a referendum instead of a big tax increase? We knew we've, we, uh, we knew we've been having funding issues for the last three years. Why did we not propose a referendum to increase, uh, percent levy? The, uh, percent levy to this exemption program, especially if the quote nuclear option was being explored? So I think those questions are all about, why don't we go out to to, uh, referendum? I think this strikes to the statement made earlier about how, uh, this program takes away, uh, communities' right to vote. And so I I disagree with that that sentiment strongly that that this program takes away the community's right to vote. The community votes for the board, and they vote for the board. They vote, they vote for the board and for us to govern. And so one of the things that that, uh, unfortunately, we have to do as board members, and I'm speaking to the board here, is that we have to govern and make sure, we have responsibility to make sure that we can keep the lights on in this district. And just because it's a hard choice for us to make does not mean that we should not, uh, be considering and making this hard choice. In the end, one of the things that that, uh, I've been thinking about is that, why would we turn down five percent from the state? And why would we gamble with the education of our our students when we can create stability now for the district?
I think it's important to keep in mind also, going back to what Mr. Craig said, if we do go out to referendum and this district has not passed a referendum to support schools in twenty years, then we would have to go out again, and then we'd have to go out again. And every person who's sitting up here was elected. And this is the way that school boards, the three hundred school boards who are given this letter are doing this.
I believe it was Flemington was one of the districts that I said that just had this, where it went out for a referendum, I believe. They went out, Flemington went out for a referendum in the fall, didn't get it, or was it, it was in the March. After saying that they were going to, these were the op- these, this is what was going to happen. It's very similar with closing schools and making cuts, that if the referendum didn't pass. The referendum didn't pass, they had to make the cuts, and now they are having to live with the reality of those cuts.
Do you have a plan to address the stress this tax increase will put on seniors and families who can't afford it? Why would the BOE decline the borough offered funding to to close the budget gap for next year? Given the current economic environment and the tax increases due to reassessment, residents are already facing large tax increases. The community told you, we cannot afford an increase of six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Why would you think it's okay to drive residents out of Clingswood with an increase of eight hundred to thirteen hundred dollars? And so this, I think these questions are about the the impact of the of the, um, tax increase on folks. And so I think this, all of us here, we're all, we're all residents in in town, and we one hundred percent understand the impact, uh, that this would would have, uh, on us, on on the community. And and also, I think we've talked about this for a while now, about the cuts, the the impact that this, not doing this would have on our our schools. And bringing the stability so that we're not talking about in a year, these exact same cuts, thirty to thirty-five staff, closing elementary school without additional space, uh, making all our extracurriculars pay to play, additional line item cuts, and more because of inflation. Being able to prevent ourselves from having to have that discussion next year, that I think is also something we have to consider. Uh, let's see, okay, next group. Uh, is it someone's job to look for other sources of federal state, uh, or, uh, other aid? Um, have you discussed info? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, are you considering, uh, shared services with the borough or other districts for, um, I think it's just cost savings?
Have you discussed infrastructure problems and other project, projects with the community to see who can help?
Uh, is there an option where you accept money from the borough that was offered in addition to whatever tax increase? Uh, any, and if not, why? Uh, will you still be pursuing other aspects of your partnership with the borough? Is it some, oh, yeah, sorry, uh, I said that, and, so I probably read that one. So this one, I think, this group, I think, is about, uh, if we're looking at other funding options, uh, and other ways to cut costs. Uh, the answer is yes, I, we we've been bringing in, I think, the last several years, seven million or more in terms of 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 grants into the the district. That's what that wellness center was. And so, yes, absolutely, there are people in the district looking for additional funding sources. Um, yes, we have shared services, uh, with, and that's actually one of the ways in which we bring in revenue into the district is by offering shared services to other districts. Um, yes, we are continuing with our partnership, uh, with the borough. And, um, uh, we, and if the if the borough wishes to contribute additional money on top of, uh, the the tax levy, then, oh, there's absolutely need for it in our school district. We can absolutely continue to use, uh, more funds to to help, uh, increase the the education to meet the needs of our students.
Can I just ask a question while you're reviewing this? So like, the buffer question earlier? That is to help absorb a program that is like critical, probably, to a lot of, uh, the wellness center that will roll off federal dollars onto the operating budget. And I, and I, and perhaps we can try to be really intentional about identifying, these things are gonna roll off fund, funding, and we don't have any cushion to absorb it, and this is the opportunity. So buffer probably isn't the right word, it's planning, budgeting for what will become our operating expenses, or we don't have those services. And so I just want to make sure I'm really understanding buffer, because we kind of answered it with other stuff. But it is about absorbing those things that are either grant-funded ended and from a federal government that does not seem to be rolling out money at this moment. We have to anticipate absorbing that, right, is what I understand.
Yes, let, so let me, let me answer that. I think that, um, you know, just so that we're all clear, is that over the last three years, we pretty aggressively went after, um, federal, uh, state and philanthropic, uh, dollars in the form of of grant funds in order to give us more time while the advocacy was taking place in order to secure long-term permanent funding. We were able to secure seven point two million dollars over the last three years, and that has helped give us time. It didn't solve the problem. As a school district, we received roughly five point five million dollars in federal funding in the areas of, uh, of Title, uh, one, two, three, and four, as well as IDEA, uh, and then, uh, some additional, um, uh, extraordinary aid based on, uh, some of our student population. Uh, we are, uh, working collaboratively with, uh, our local, regional, and state agencies and organizations in order to be able to keep what we currently have. There has been, and I don't think, all you have to do is turn on a TV or go to your news feed, there has been a continued decrease in federal investment, not just in public education, but federal investment, period. The challenge is that, should the federal government deliver on the threat that we received last week, um, we will be in a very different fiscal reality with no buffer, no funds to replace it, no new federal opportunities, no additional grant funds in order to close said gap.
Okay, so the next set of, uh, cards have questions to do with the the teacher contracts, so I'll read out, uh, through them. Also understanding that that, uh, there's only so much for us to talk about in terms of, uh, publicly about negotiations. So first is, will teachers who live here and work here, uh, as teachers get a tax break? Um, if the unions are unhappy with, uh, raises offered, but anything more has to come from a fixed tax revenue? Uh, I think it says aid grant and and grant amount. What are, uh, they proposing to cut or, uh, pull funding from to cover, uh, better raises? Um, would you be able to guarantee that the teacher's contract would be settled with this local tax increase? If so, what date, would a contract be agreed upon? Uh, you are taxing teachers that live in this district and work for the district. How are you going to provide fair pay and settle the contract for all teachers? You have many families who live off a teacher salary. Raising the taxes will make it unaffordable for teachers to live here and work here. So once again, how are you going to settle the teacher contract? Is this part of the plan? Is selling the the contract one of the expected impacts in any of the three options? With the increased tax levy, will the, uh, board be, uh, adding additional funds to its, uh, current CA proposal to the CA to settle the contract? Will any of these scenarios provide the teachers with a settled contract that provides what teachers are seeking? Uh, does the proposal to maintain staff in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six resolve the outstanding CA contract? Uh, what will it take to settle the teacher contracts at the fair rate that they deserve? Uh, will any of the, uh, proposed plans fund the CA contract? Uh, what assurances do we have that the teacher's contract will be settled? Um, so that was a big, uh, uh, clump of cards about the teacher contract there. Uh, what I will say about the teacher contract is that, uh, the current budget that we approved in, uh, March, I forgot what it was, March, uh, eighteenth, uh, that is now under review at the county level, uh, does include, um, the the raises that we've offered in that contract. And the current budget, uh, that we're currently operating under also does include, uh, raises, those raises for teachers. One of the challenges we've had, and what I said earlier, is that this district obviously has not been able to afford, uh, raises. And, but at the same time, this entire board, we all know and we all believe that our teachers deserve raises. And so what, uh, what I think we're hopeful for with this program is that it will let us afford the the teacher contract without having to lay off teachers like we did last year and like we would have had to this year without additional, uh, funding. Um, there are two other questions in this group, which is, why didn't you accept the offer from CA for two hundred twenty-five thousand to settle the contract issues, March twenty-seventh? If we can partner with the borough to fund athletic facilities, why did the BOE decline the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar offer from the borough to settle the contract? Um, the, the board and the district have not declined, uh, have not refused any money from the borough, so I'm not sure what that means there. Um, next, uh. Yep. Uh. Under, understanding that payroll is the, uh, largest, uh, line item, but what? Um, s- sorry, it's some, it's actually some fantastic cursive, but it's hard, hard to read. Yeah, how many staff members will be reinstated and which programs, uh, who will be making those decisions? How can the residents gain a better, uh, de- better detailed understanding of the BOE budget? Why are the budget expense details not transparent to the taxpayers? Um, when will line item justification of the tax increase be made available to the public? Uh, would you plan to use the increased local tax funds to hire back, to hire back all or any of the twenty-plus teaching positions that were eliminated last year? If so, how many? Um, are you, uh, looking to buy Good Shepherd and close schools and use money from the tax levy to repair schools? What, uh, what, what the referendum was vote, was no, voted no on? Why would you deny the offer from the borough to let the taxpayers vote on this since Sep- September? Will you show how the money will be used, contract for teachers, hire for positions that were cut? Are you concerned about forcing people out, taxes were just raised with reassessment?
Uh, can we see the full budget before it gets voted on? We have many experts in our town, understanding that payroll is the largest line item. Um, but what scrub has been done on the other line items?
Matt, do you want to talk about the the budget, uh, just like the auditing process, finance, buildings, grounds?
In terms of where, where the process begins? Um, I mean, I can take this from Beth Ann, but, yeah, and I will try to get better at my microphone skills. Um, again. Hmm? Get that five percent. Um, the, so, the budget process starts back in October where, um, administration takes a look at where where the funding priorities are from the last year, where they think they're going to be in the next year, and garners feedback from building leaders up and through January. I mean, I'm giving this a very short answer in terms of what that looks like. And then Beth Ann and Dr. Dr. McDowell, Ms. Coleman and Dr. McDowell look through those requests, go line by line to see what we can afford, go back and forth with budget leaders, and then talk to us as a, as a Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee about where they see things going, and this is all before we know what our funding is going to look like. We find out in February after the governor's address what money we can anticipate, and then we adjust. And for the last several years, that has been lower than what we had hoped it would be, so we've had to make negative adjustments based on on what we could afford. Um, was there other specific questions in there that you want me to?
And I think the other questions were around, like, when can the the public see the budget? So the the budget is, uh.
Some of the trans- transparency, so budgets and audits are posted on our website every year. Um, after we will have the budget posted, Beth Ann, when would, when would this year, next year's school budget be posted on the website?
Um, I have to have it on the website within forty-eight hours of the public hearing.
I think some of the specific questions in that cluster were around this particular provision, and will there be transparency around, uh, the 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 stipulations and the justifications with this ask? I think if I was interpreting the questions correctly.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's a, that's application. Yeah, so that, I mean, that's application submitted to the state and then we will have to vote on the budget of how that money is then used. And so, yeah, that piece will be public.
It could be helpful within our process to understand too, Beth Ann, where this money shows up in the budget. I don't know if that's possible, but as we're going through the process.
Yeah, once, again, once we, my words, Thursday, we're voting on the application. So once we're done, the application will be on the webs, on the board docs in the administrative content. So the board members can see where, what the entire application looks like. So you guys will be able to see it before. It's still kind of, it's still a mess. And then when we do the public hearing, again, it will, once we decide how much, if anything at all, then yeah, it will be addressed in the public hearing, which line items. Mostly it's right now, it's in staffing and it's supplies and curriculum.
Will that application be avail, like I think that's part of the question. Is that a publicly available or is it internally available? I'm just asking to the board.
It'll be internally available to the board before Thursday, when I'm done with it.
Then after Thursday, anybody can find it?
I don't know if I have to check with the state. I don't know if it's a public document or not, to be honest with you. I know I have to upload it to Trenton on, by Monday. I don't know if it's a public document or not, to be honest.
Thank you.
And again, when we're talking public hearing, that's the May 5th date, correct?
Yes. All right, so then next group of questions about the Good Shepherd school building. How does Good Shepherd fit into the new tax increase? Under any of these circumstances or scenarios, will you be purchasing Good Shepherd? Does the BOE intend to use any funds to purchase the Good Shepherd building? Would the tax increase go towards funding the purchase of Good Shepherd? If so, would that include money to renovate Good Shepherd or would that be done through referendum? If so, would the board move forward with the plan of turning Good Shepherd into a grade four, five school? Are you planning to buy Good Shepherd? So this question, I think, has, folks are wondering whether or not what we propose tonight and what we present tonight would be used to fund the purchase of Good Shepherd. And the answer is no. This right here is about our operating budget. So basically what we, what we have to bring in in order to keep the lights on, in order to keep our staff, in order to pay our staff, in order to keep our programs going. So this right here does not have to do with the purchase of Good Shepherd. It has to do with keeping the education of our students going. The other question here is about, are you planning to buy Good Shepherd? And something I think this has been brought to us before and I just want to be very clear. Our facilities needs have not changed. We have three elementary schools over 100 years old. We are out of space within our elementary school system. So of course, as a board, as a district, we have to explore all options. It would be negligent of us not to explore all options. Good Shepherd still is one of the youngest school, I think, one of the youngest school buildings options for us in this town and it would allow us to renovate and update our elementary school buildings at a much cheaper price than trying to build a new one. And so of course, we're exploring and trying to figure out how best can we meet our facilities needs because that's the responsible thing to do for our district. But that has nothing to do with this because this is about keeping the lights on as they are now and paying our staff. And just to make sure I'm being clear so that people don't say that I'm not. Now, of course, within any operating budget, you have to have money to, like if, I don't know, if a window breaks here, you have to have money within operating budget to repair that window, right? So of course, some of this money will go to maintaining these buildings because that is part of keeping the lights on.
So can I just be really, I'll make sure we're crystal clear. In order to make any significant capital investment, which would be the purchase of anything at this moment, it would be presented at the board and possibly have to go out for asking for additional capital funding, right? I think that's, we don't have the budget to buy anything, barely roofs, windows and stairs, right? So I just want to make really clear that we would have to ask for the money to be able to make that level of purchase.
Correct. I mean, we had to cut, you know, five million dollars from our budget last two years. This year, we're looking at a 3.6 million dollar budget hole. That we're talking about trying to get our nose above the water, not even our head above the water, right? And so this is all about that budget and there is no money in there to purchase buildings.
When is the lease up for Good Shepherd?
We have one more year.
Next set of questions. Dr. McDowell said that he is a concert home owner. Is he aware, he makes six times as much as his lowest paid teacher. Is he aware that these taxes would hit teachers harder than him? How can the superintendent justify his raise for, and not pay the teachers? I think there is one item specifically mentioned by the board is $700,000 spent on transportation for students that cannot attend here. How many students, how are they transported? For the last three years, our district has been refusing to provide and document the provision of one-to-one assistance in the 504s of students for whom your professionals have advocated for. Please explain your justification. I'm very confused and concerned about the wellness center plan. The center has not been well maintained over the past few years despite the free federal grant. How can we be assured that the increased funding will be used wisely? The assistant superintendent's salary was funded by this grant even though it does not relate to mental health. So I think there are several comments here about the salaries of the board's employees. You know, I'm not really going to go into individual employees here because that is unethical for us as a board to do so. What I will mention is that I'm not really sure how, you know, continued attacks on individuals that are serving our district is going to solve our budget issue here. And that's something that, having been up here for five years now, I've seen that happen through COVID, through the pandemic, through budget crises. And from my perspective, that does nothing to help solve our budget issues. And I'm really grateful that we right now have an option and a program that can help us solve our budget issues. Will the presentation slides be shared publicly and how, what option fully funds the teacher contract? How long does stability last? How are you incorporating feedback to determine what, to ask for, what is the wellness center? So the first one about the presentation slides, they will be shared publicly tomorrow on our website. Also, there will be a one-page FAQ that recaps the slides. And I think the presentation slides that will be shared tomorrow will actually be very detailed with even more information that we wanted to go through, but understood that we didn't want to spend. Yeah, the transparency question.
There was a question in there about special ed out of district transportation. We are a member of Camden County Ed Services Commission, which is a large shared service group in Camden County. It's a bunch of school districts. We all join, but Camden County Ed Services, they transport for us. We're a non-transporting district, so they do all of our transportation for us.
I'm just making sure I didn't drop any index cards. I think that's it. All right, so thank you. So we're not going to discuss negotiations here? Oh, so the wellness center, I mean, do you want to describe the wellness center? Just what is the wellness center?
So the wellness center is part of a federal grant and the purpose of the federal grant was addressing trauma in schools. And so there were provisions in the funding for staff, clinical, social workers, behavioral specialists, MTSS, coaches, administrative support in terms of grant secretary, professional development, training and capacity building over a four-year period. And so in terms of the funding, direct services to students was its primary goal. And at the onset of this discussion, we shared that between 150 and 180 students are receiving clinical, mental health counseling and support every single month. Eight to 10 students are receiving emergent crisis support weekly. In addition to targeted level support for teachers in the form of MTSS support. Last month, the Board of Education approved a digital platform that will allow all of the data from all of the students that are receiving services or who need to receive targeted services is all contained in one place in order to reduce the amount of time that our educators are spending searching for data in multiple areas and so that they can spend the majority of their time focused on students. In addition to targeted levels of training and additional community engagement and then ongoing activities, events, and then special programs that come based on the wellness center staff that determine new programs that come in and new partnerships.
All right, thank you everyone for all of your questions. That was, I'm glad that, I think that that actually worked out pretty well and so hopefully we were able to answer folks' questions. I know now that we've been at this for a while, so I want to be able to open up now to public comments. So before we do that, I need a motion to come out of committee of the whole. And a second? And all those in favor? So now we're going to move on to section four, which is public participation. So tonight, there's only one public participation section, so this is the public participation section. The public is minded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comments to give the committee opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We'd be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that as being said into consideration. Appropriate clarifying comments may be made at the end of public comments for more detailed responses to concerns. Communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of public are welcome to speak and expect to do so with utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. And in fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment and Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and your address for the record.
Thanks. Listen, I really wish I'd been able to talk a little bit earlier, but, because I have some information. Roger and I had talked on Friday and Saturday about meetings that we've had with the state, different folks at the state. And I think with the tax incentive levy, there's some changes that may very well be coming that I think will help. So as you set the stage for this, this is, the guidance that was provided for this program is part of the budget, the 25, 26 budget that, I'm sorry, the 25, 26 budget that the state will adopt. So the language in it that allows this is still flexible, is still, it's a very fluid process. And have had discussions with the governor's office, with legislative leaders, with legislative staffers today, literally until I got off the phone and came over here. And I believe there is a good likelihood that there will be changes made that help reduce the impact on taxpayers. Roger, you and I touched on it just real briefly on Saturday that there may be set up a bank levy, a cap, the cap bank for like the next five years. So you get the one-time increase this year, but you're able to bank that and use it over the next five. So it would mean that there would be, it would put a little more flexibility so that you didn't hit taxpayers with the full blow of whatever you decide you're going to do in one year and it could be worked over a few years. So I think there's a likelihood that that can happen. Hasn't yet, but guess what? None of this has happened yet. So we're still roaming around with everything. It's all up in the air. And what I want to propose to you, the email we got last Tuesday from the board was saying, look, we don't need the borough's money. And I just want to suggest to you, and listen, we've taken actions based on that, but after the last couple of days, I think even the actions we've taken are going to get thrown out the window because I think there may still be an ability to help reduce the impact. And I'll just give the hypothetical, if you go the full, if you go the 6-4, that impacts, you know, 1,400 a year on the average household. That's a killer, that's just a killer. And if we were to do something that we spread that over five and for the first couple of years, we went back to the proposal that we had made originally to fund to fill in that gap so that we filled in that 3-6. Next year, we filled in, we could do a little bit less and get it to where after like, in my rough calculations, like in the third year, you'd be at a point where you could make it up just with that levy.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. The three minutes is up. Well, if we're, if. Hang on, hang on. If you would, if you would like for us to discuss, we can discuss later, but the public comments, it's three minutes is over. Thank you.
You're telling me I'm shut down after three minutes?
This is the public comments section. We have three minutes for each person.
You got a partnership, right? Partnership, partners.
Can I get recognized, please, for three minutes? And can I cede my time to let Jim finish his point?
Please continue.
We're partners.
Mayor, Mayor Lee, please, please continue.
No, Roger, we're partners, right?
Mayor, Mayor Lee, please continue.
All right, so we're trying, so what I'm suggesting is stay open to, stay open toward a lot of different options that could still be coming down the pike. Don't close the doors on any of these because I think there are ways that we can, in collaborating together, we can help minimize the impact on taxpayers. So we, at our budget last night, we, one of the actions I think we're going to have to change again, depending on what I, because of what I think is coming down the road, is we introduced our third amended budget. And this budget, we've made revisions to it anticipating that the board is going to take advantage of this levy. We've changed our budget so that our municipal budget is, instead of a $91 increase, is a zero, okay? And we're doing that again to try to minimize the impact of what a larger-than-usual school tax increase would be, okay? So we've done that, but I still think there may be room for us to look at the overall. If things change and you don't have to use all of this in one year, there's the opportunity to help work this so that we get the schools back to that level so that you've got a realistic cap that you're working with and we minimize the impact on taxpayers, okay? And lastly, I just need to urge, the one issue that we just have to get out of the way is resolving the teacher's contract. I'm happy, I'm happy for us to be, to help give that financial stability, to give the board comfort that they can resolve it, but we just have to get that out of the way because it is confusing and confounding everyone and we just got to move it to get it done, okay? I thought we had it with the, even the Plan B, as it's been described, which is go back to the borough to get all the money if all this, if the state program goes away. Even with that, I thought we had it all resolved. So I really just want to urge you, let's get this done so that we can just focus on the really hard part about getting out to people and letting them know this is going on. My last one, I'll get out of here, is we really, we haven't had a good dialogue so far. We haven't had folks getting back about the public outreach. This has all happened so fast. We have not had, the state just notified everybody, what, last Tuesday? There's not enough time to get notice out. That's the problem. Nobody knows that this is going on, nobody does. Our text message system is so ineffective and that's, we really need to have some meetings. I know Sandy reached out to Lori, is it Lori? And there hasn't been really any dialogue there. So we got to get something done to get it out to people, to let them know what's going on, okay? Thank you.
My name is Dashrell Correa Fisher. I live at ten seventeen Eldridge Ave. And I am a senior at Collingswood High School. Trey's handing out a document to each of you, which you on the board already have. It shouldn't surprise you guys though, because you already know what it says. Take your time to read it for yourself, but I'll come right out and say, we've all heard the rumors that in addition to their announced funding partnership, the board was offered another two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand by the Bureau of Government for the express purpose of settling the union contract. I'm here right now to tell you that it's all true. In fact, it's even worse than that. He further said that this was because, oh, I skipped ahead. After hearing these rumors, nope, yeah, after hearing these rumors, I actually came across Mayor Malley himself while he was campaigning door-to-door, and I thought to ask him straight up if this was true. He said yes. He further said that this was because the board specifically asked for this exact amount of money because it was the exact amount they still needed to settle the union contract. I asked if I could get that in writing. He said yes. And that's the email you're looking at right now. What the email tells us is the board asked for this money specifically and solely to settle the teacher contract, got the money, then found out they could just raise your taxes instead, by a total average of six-hundred-and-seventy-one to fourteen-hundred instead of zero. Let me be clear. The board found a way to be able to pay the goddamn teachers and then turned it down without ever telling anyone it ever happened. I wish it was a lie, but the only people who have lied about this are the people I'm looking at right now. Roger, you didn't actually deny the money. You still haven't acknowledged that you just asked for it. Once again, there is this lack of transparency. Many people in this town will find it hard to pay these new over-the-limit taxes, especially the teachers, fifty of whom live in the Collingswood city limits. You are raising their taxes while denying them a fair raise. You want to deny everyone in this damn room the knowledge that you could have settled the contract by now with no changes to your budget. To say the least, it's tone deaf of you in times when people's retirement and saving accounts are plunging. People are already losing enough money. You can't lie to us any longer and say the raises you've been offering the CEAR are fair. You know they aren't because you asked for my money. You can't say you can't find any extra money because they were sitting in your grubby little hands. You all hold an obvious weird contempt for Malley because he didn't like your referendum idea. Guys, nobody liked that referendum. It lost. You lost. You could have just accepted the two-hundred-and-twenty-five and still raised taxes. We've been telling you, we'd be happy to pay the extra taxes if it meant higher teacher pay for years, but we already paid enough tax dollars to settle this contract. You could have got it from the borough. I don't know why you're trying to prove you can go it along, go it alone. Number one, you don't have to. Number two, I have no confidence that you actually can. Clearly, you have no real concern for the people of this borough, its teachers, or anything by your own egos. Now that your lies have been exposed, the best way to protect those egos is in turn tar and beg for the borough to give you the money back. Do it or get out of the way and resign. We demand a fair contract because we can give us one today at no cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do believe I, I need to address several of these, these points. All right.
Hi, Katie Deshane, I love Maple Lane. I have a couple logistical questions. I guess my first one is how do you actually decide what option you're going to apply for? You've heard a ton of public comment here tonight, so it would be helpful for us as a group to understand if we're going to go for the low, we're going to go to the medium, we're going to go for the high, the full funding. I know it goes to vote on Thursday, but clearly you're going to come up with a proposal. So what input are you taking and from who? And how is that brought into the decision for what we're going to ask for funding? And then I think my second question is around actually the, the stability, and I'd asked that question on the card and it was not answered. So we are in a deficit of about, what, three-point-six, three-point-eight million dollars. We cut five million dollars. So even if we get that full six, we're not back to baseline. So you have, I mean, the fact that you said you didn't anticipate a utility cost, like that's against basic budgeting. We're assuming that there's going to be an increasing cost. You've got to assume your Chromebooks are going to be a lot more expensive, your computers are about to be a lot more expensive, your insurance costs are about to be a lot more expensive on, for your staff. So how are we projecting our budget year two, year three, year four? Because even if we go for full funding, we're not back to baseline and your costs are to increase by at least ten to twenty percent every year. So we're going to be in the same position in not too long. So it's not, it's not really a long-term stability. It's a pretty short-term stability. And how are you addressing that and how are you planning for that? And how are you also then sharing that information with the community?
Trey Ramsburg, thirty-two East Colter Avenue. I'd like to point out to everyone here that when Roger said that the board didn't turn down any money to pay the teachers from the borough, that was absolutely a lie. You have proof in your hands in the audience from Jim Malley himself telling you that the borough did in fact offer the school board the two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars they asked for and didn't tell any of you about, and that the board ended up saying no. You actually heard Malley himself say right now that the board told him that they don't need any money from the borough. Someone isn't telling the whole truth here. And I, I struggle to believe that these people up here, board leadership, has our best interests at heart. Dr. McDowell, I don't have any confidence in you. Neither did the Trenton Teachers Association when they voted no confidence in you, when they sued the school board for giving you a raise. You're not there anymore, are you? You're here. You're the Elon Musk of Collingswood. You're not from Collingswood. Collingswood didn't elect you and you're very bad with Collingswood's money. These tax increases are unnecessary, as we all know, at least at this degree. If you're talking about sustainability, you had what you presented as a sustainable partnership with the borough government that you seem to be all too eager to throw to the wayside now that you found out you can raise our taxes. The taxes of fifty of these teachers who haven't gotten a raise in years and who you are continuing to deny fair pay that we know you can give them today. That's it.
Good evening. My name's Kelly McGinnis. I live at four-twelve Cattell Avenue. So my question wasn't answered, so I just want to reiterate again. From my understanding, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm thrilled to hear that the district values the Wellness Center. My concerns are information that I've heard about the Wellness Center, despite it being basically free, it's been federally funded, that staff in the past few years has gone from, I believe, six or seven people running the center to now two clinical and one admin. I'm a social worker. I do not understand how these two clinicians are seeing a hundred-and-fifty to a hundred-and-eighty students a month. That is, that's just a recipe for burnout. And so again, I think the Wellness Center is a wonderful initiative. I would just want to see that if we are as a town to invest in it, what the kind of oversight is going to be, what the plan is for really keeping it strong, retaining staff. As a, as a mental health worker, I'm always happy to partner with the schools or to provide any kind of consultation, excuse me, consultation. But to me, this is very disheartening and I think there's a disconnect from what I hear about what is actually happening at the center now versus the way that the board is talking about it. So I just urge you all to ask questions and come up with a really solid plan. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Stacy DeMarco. I live at five-twenty-four Jessmine Avenue over by the Scottish Rite. I have two kids at Sharp School, one in second grade and one in kindergarten. I just want to really quickly, there was a question that was asked about salary and the, the board and the superintendent being aware of the effect on the town. I, myself, don't mind taxes going up. I, especially if it pays our teacher's salary and things like that. But Mr. Chu, your, your response was that you're not going to answer attacks. Questions are not attacks, especially when you're an elected official. People asking you questions is not attacking you. People asking salary discussions is not attacking you, especially when your salary is paid by the people in the town. Not your salary, Roger Chu, the superintendent's salary. So that's, that's just, you have to be willing to answer questions when people ask you of them. It's not an attack, it's a question. And again, I don't mind paying extra taxes. I know that I am in the minority though, in that I can afford the extra seventy to a hundred dollars a month. Not everybody is in that position. And to just flit that off as in people just won't pay for it, or if we do some sort of partnership with the borough and the task, the tax ask is not seventy to a hundred dollars per month, per households, that would get people to vote for it. You, you keep saying that referendums won't pass in this town, but that is not true. When you're talking about funding teacher's salary, funding, bringing people back, rehiring people, getting things back to the high school the way, the way that they were, getting more electives back into the high school, the town would vote for that and would approve it. The town loves its schools. Every single day, magic happens in these buildings. Every single day. My kids are in second and kindergarten and I think it's amazing that they leave my home and come back and they know how to read and they're learning about all these wonderful things. And the teachers in those buildings do those things every single day. And again, if you were asking the town to raise teacher salaries, the town would say yes.
I'm not sure if I get three minutes since I did offer to give my three minutes to the mayor. So if there's still time permitting, I'd like to make a few comments. I'm Crystal Ward from three-two-five Newton Avenue. So I have a few thoughts. First of all, it seems like the option three that was presented would mostly just retain the potential staff cuts. So it seems like that option is almost exactly the same as what the borough has offered to help the district with, without increasing our taxes. So it doesn't make sense to me that the, the BOE is considering raising our taxes instead of accepting free help from the borough. Number one. Number two, I think it's obvious from all the questions that were submitted that the town is quite concerned, at least those represented here tonight, about these potential tax increases. And based on the dialogue that I listened to, I don't have a very high level of confidence that more than two or maybe three people on the BOE have a very detailed understanding of what is going to be voted on in two days' time that's going to have a massive impact on most of the residents. And lastly, I really feel that the BOE should be taking the offered borough assistance to get through the next school year and should continue your previous commitment, of which I was here at the last meeting, that I heard you all agree to and you all very excitedly promote, that you had this wonderful new partnership and you were going to be working together with the, the borough and with the town residents on a special committee to figure out the long-term funding solution needs. So I am extremely disappointed to hear that that's all been thrown out the window because you're just going to tax us all out the wazoo and I don't support that. Thank you.
Gerald in Rock, seven-forty Bedawood Avenue. And I just want to say one thing that is part of what that lady just said, but to make it real clear, because it's just one thing. I'm stunned at the number of board members I heard say tonight, they had not seen the presentation and seemed completely unaware of the details of the budget. How is that possible?
Hi, Mike Pelucci, three-fifty-seven Park Avenue and also VP of the CEA for the high school. I just wanted to make two points real quick. So I know one of the board members, Sarah, like some of our other, our former colleagues who live in the borough here, um, used to work here and have gone to other districts to make more money essentially. Like, I, I totally get where you're coming from, but the district, like that's just an example. Now, it's not a comparable district to ours, but the guide where, at the district that you work at starts at almost ten thousand dollars more than we start at here. So like that's the kind of, that's the kind of numbers that we're talking about and we're not asking, we're not asking to be put on par with a district of that size. Okay? Second, I understand that it's frustrating because there's people on various sides of this issue who don't all have their information right. Right? And that's people that are behind you guys, that's people that are behind us, like, and there's facts out there that people are misinformed about. And that's just the nature of this. And it's frustrating to hear especially the opposite side have the information wrong. Right? So I think we all agree on that. You know, it's understandable to take advantage of the tax levy incentive program because none of us will have to sweat out a referendum in September, right? Like, that's the negative side of the partnership with the borough, because we'd all be pushing for this referendum because it would be for operation costs. And if that goes down, we'd be in big trouble. So it makes sense to take advantage of this program. It's why the state is putting it, it's, it's rather rushed and haphazard, but that's, that's why they're putting it forth. Okay? That being said, it should be abundantly clear, regardless of how deep into this you are, that as I've been saying, we're not that far apart. If this was a priority, settling our contract, it would have been done. If it was a priority, it would have been done. With all of the resources, with all of the resources that the borough has, that the board has at its disposal, and now with the tax levy incentive program, it, it's, it's abundantly clear that this is not a priority. And that's why I think you're seeing so much frustration. Thank you.
If I can do this right. Oh, no. Okay. Robin Hogan, CEA president, teacher at Sharp Elementary School. I think a lot of things have been said very well, better than I can say them, but I just, it seems like, is the mayor still here? No. Yes. Seems like even tonight, the mayor is leaving the door open for some type of substantial partnership that we can get some work done. And that includes settling the teacher's contract. And I'm feeling there's, like, there's a disconnect because you've got, the borough is saying that settling the teacher's contract is important. Community members are here saying settling the teacher's contract is important. And I feel like there's a disconnect between what's, what is being said. You've repeatedly said, well, we budgeted for, we're not increasing what we budgeted for. We budgeted for this before, you know, for the proposal, our proposal to CEA before any of this came down and we're not changing it. But the mayor has come up and again yet, even though you've closed the door on him, he has said, we're still willing to help out. And I don't see any movement. And I don't understand. I feel like the CEA and the community are the only ones who are saying that retaining and attracting teachers is important, that it's not good enough for our teachers to be in the bottom third anymore. And I feel like it's not being heard. And I don't know what to do. I honestly don't know what to do anymore, that you will hear that message, but we're going to keep on saying it. I think the community is going to keep on saying it until somebody hears us and until there's a change.
Hi, I am Eliana Oster, ten-oh-five McGill Avenue. I'm in sixth grade at Collingswood Middle School. I am so disappointed to hear the other comments tonight and hear how you have been unwilling to settle the teacher contracts. I keep hearing about how you don't want to raise taxes, but it seems like that's the only option you're actually willing to go with. Students are watching and we know why this is happening. It's not fair to expect our teachers to work for free after-school hours when they are being treated respectfully by their employers. We want the people who are our major support at school to be treated with the same care and respect. and respect that we are expected to show them. Show them, show them that respect and settle a fair contract. Make it your priority to get these wonderful teachers fair contracts. Teachers deserve to be paid fairly for everything they do. We don't have to lose more time or more amazing teachers. Please settle the teacher's contract.
I live at one-ten Park Avenue. I also am an employee of this district, and I've been here for two years. I would love to settle this teacher contract. Not only are you guys upping my taxes, but I'm on a one-income salary based on a teacher's salary. I, I'm struggling, and I'm going to be pushed out of your district soon if, if we don't settle. And I know others around me are probably like that, too. You know, I'm not speaking for myself. You know, my situation is different from others, but people live off these salaries, and our, our taxes are being increased every single day in this district. I will not be able to afford to live here anymore. I have two little boys that go to school here. I would love for them to grow up in this town. It's an amazing place to live. It's probably the best place I've lived, actually, in all of my years of my life, even, even growing up, you know, based on, like, you know, comparing to where I grew up. This town has everything for kids that I'd ever dreamed of to raise kids in, you know? They can go downtown, they can bike around, and what else are we going to do but drive kids and families out of here? I mean, you guys have to settle the teacher contract, otherwise I will no longer be your employee.
Hello, Erica Han, Collingswood Middle School. Wasn't preparing to say anything tonight, however, I just want to mention the, the fact that we're talking about things being personal and attacks. This feels really personal to me. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that could settle our contract. We are exhausted. I don't want to be here wasting my time on this nonsense when there is basically a way out of this. And two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that is what we are battling over, so that some teachers who have been at the top of the salary guide and haven't seen a raise in years will actually, we won't get cost of living, but we'll see a little extra money in our paychecks. I just don't understand. It feels personal. It feels like you don't want teachers like me here anymore. I still have a good amount of time. I love my job. I love what I do every day, and that is the one thing that's keeping me going and not making me want to just throw in the towel with this district. I've written emails, sent them to all of you, told you my colleagues are looking right now, good colleagues. Another middle school recently posted jobs. They're offering for sixteen years, a hundred thousand dollars, more than that, actually, a hundred and one. We, here, sixteen years, we're in the low eighties, I believe it is. We can't compete with that, but you can take the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's being offered as a gift, no strings attached, and put this to bed. This is ridiculous. This feels personal. It absolutely feels like you don't want us here. So please, knock it off. It feels like you've dug your heels in, you've said this is the way it's going to be, no matter how much money we get from the state, this is what we're willing to offer you, above county average, that will still keep you below the middle. Do you know what that feels like? Like, seriously, can you empathize with that? Can you put yourself in our shoes? We are so frustrated right now. Thank you.
Okay, seeing as there are no more, more public comments, I'm going to close the public comments section, and I think there are many issues that, that need to be addressed. The very, the very first one is with regards to the Borough plan versus this tax increase. And so, part of the joint agreement with the Borough was that if the state came out with a plan for us to be able to raise taxes, we would do so to offset the Borough's contribution to the district. So we are doing that as part of the joint agreement. The reason why this needs to be done is because it provides us with year-after-year stability, not one year of temporary funding. There were statements about the referendum. Why wouldn't we go out, just go out for a referendum? It would lower the tax burden on the town. And let me be very clear, the referendum for the same amount would have the same tax impact on the town, except, except that we would not get five percent from the state additional. It would not, so one of those things is, is, that is, that is, I think, the, the big issue here, is that we, as a Board, can provide stability to the district financially, and, and that is, I think, the big difference. But again, the tax impact between a referendum and this would be the same. It's not like a referendum is suddenly cheaper. So then, there was also the statement here about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that, that the district has supposedly declined. The Board and district has not refused any money from the Borough. If, if, the Borough is, the Borough is statutorily allowed to provide additional funding to the district. The Borough can provide additional funding to the district whenever it wants. It could have provided additional funding to the district last year. We have not refused any funding, and indeed, if the Borough wishes to give additional funding, there is, of course, space for that funding to, to be used to improve our student, meet our student needs. Now, so, again, let me reiterate, we have not refused any amount of money. Also, a statement that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would, would, would settle the difference between the teacher's contract and, and the Board's offer is not true. Um, the, let's see, I want to make sure I've addressed. Finally, I think one of the, the points that I also want to reiterate is that, again, I believe everyone on this Board, of course, wants to settle this, this contract, and we've been willing to sell this contract for as soon as, as quickly as possible. I want to reiterate and remind the community that last year we had to lay off twenty-one staff. This year, we have a deficit that would lead to thirty to thirty-five, uh, uh, cut, staff cuts. So one of those things that we have to make sure we do is bring in funding to be able to afford our teacher contract. The funding piece is very real, and we cannot agree to a contract that would force us to continue cutting teachers when we can't bring in revenue. That is, again, why we want to go out for this program. I think the, the final piece that I want to address is, there's a question about when will the amount of money be decided for what we're going out for? And the idea is that we will apply for the, the whole pot, because the, the state is asked, will, will then go through and determine what we can and cannot receive. And then from then, that gives the Board the maximum amount of flexibility to then have discussions and figure out how much tax raise that, that we will actually go out for in order to provide stability for our district. So, so that is what it is. Again, our vote on Thursday is to approve our application. The actual tax raise will be, would be approved in, in May. So I think those were some of the issues and questions that were, were brought up. With that, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn. So is there a motion? And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.